...turn for guidance to our professional staff. Where do we go from here?
All right. So, for this work session, what staff has been able to work on since the last meeting, and some of this, you know, based on the discussions building off of the previous work session that we had, what we've done, I have circulated to each of you guys a hard copy, and I can pull up the PDF as well. Couple of topics we want to try to go through within the timeframe we have is a red line document for potential considerations of revisions to page 13, which is section E at the preface of the historic standards, how to obtain a certificate of appropriateness. A lot of this is language pertaining to what village staff does in making determinations when applications are first submitted to our staff. One, and there was a lot of language back and forth with us at one of the meetings about, including something about staff making a determination of whether a project is considered minor work or major work. One addition we could certainly entertain to throw in there is basic work as well. But really quickly, we can go through this document and get some feedback from the commission. Something else that we would like to kind of roll out to you guys for some thoughtful consideration is a document that Alexandria has been working on for a handful of months now. It's a, like, an informational packet. It's an application packet that also includes not just helpful information and the hard copy of the application itself, but also a helpful checklist, reminder of items that should accompany the application form, either for a minor or a major work COA. So, we want to share that with you guys as well. There's another document that we've circulated to you, hard copies, sort of a motion template, like a guide for leading the meeting for who's chairing. As I mentioned with Eric before the meeting, Shannon and I kind of began on that endeavor as we've had some changes in leadership with our other advisory board, so just kind of helped them along. Of course, your peers at the Board of Adjustment also operate in a quasi-judicial manner as well, so we felt we could kind of maybe translate a lot of that over to the HPC. So, obviously with Eric and Tom's experience, and if there's any potential future interest in the rest of you folks for a candidate for a chair position, years down, if it's something you find helpful, share with you. And then concluding, be able to provide a little bit of an information update on how packet material. Moving to electronic submissions, we've actually made some progress in discussions with administrative staff on that, so I hope to be able to provide an update on that. So, with permission, then we can just go right through the document we have in front of you again on the screen, as well as hard copy in front of you, and then the next item we'll look at is the submission checklist.
Two minor points. Your name tags are reversed unless you're impersonating one another.
It's Alex.
As long as it's being videotaped.
Alex is Alex.
We could just...
And Eric, do we need a motion to call the work session to order?
Yes, should have, probably.
I don't know. Shall we do that?
I would so move if we need one.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded that we call the work session to order. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Asked unanimously.
They want to look at the minutes that we've got to approve, so we don't forget them.
We don't approve minutes on the work session, do we?
Okay. So, we don't have any for the work, the last work session?
So, there won't be any minutes for review during the work session?
Okay. I stand corrected.
Okay. So, we're going to first discuss how to obtain a certificate of appropriateness, which, having taken a look at this, I think this is a very, going to be a great deal of benefit, both to the staff and to the commission, to encourage applicants to give us complete packages sufficiently in advance of a hearing, that we commissioners can review them, but also that the staff has them sufficiently in advance, that the staff can review them and identify any gaps, which there obviously often are, and get them corrected before the last-minute rush that we sometimes have to go through. So, I think this looks like a great step forward to me, but I'd be interested to know what others think.
And two, to highlight, some of the major changes are obviously in the fourth paragraph, where you see the bulk of the additions or proposed deletions. One topic that we have talked about for quite some time is extending the submittal deadline up another week. The hope for that is that initial first week, so week out four to three, staff has gotten now time to know exactly, at the best, what applications can be forwarded to the HPC. Give us time to run through and see what omissions may have not been included, or if there's any incorrect information, anything else that staff feels should be necessary in accompanying that application. Have that opportunity to reach out to the applicant. And then from week three to week two, which is going to be our deadline to send the notice, that's when staff can make that decision on whether or not it's going to move forward for consideration for the HPC at that next meeting. So, that builds in that extra little bit of time. The helpful language in there, again, I'm sure that any of this that has been thrown in here can be massaged a little bit, but wanted to make sure it was clear that this timeline allows staff the ability to determine whether if it's, A, considered a major work sometimes, especially with our online submittals. I know Alexandria and Kim and all of us have had a time before with other applicants. They'll submit the wrong application without, you know, maybe they'll submit a major, but it's really a minor, so then we got to do a check request, refund their money, and it's, can be a bit of a process. But so, it gives us an opportunity to determine what level of work it is, also get the agenda packet complete, because again, there is an administrative time in making sure we're getting all this information forwarded to you. And then we do have that statutory obligation for notice requirements, and like we're in a holiday season now, sometimes other holidays fall where, you know, we're shortened, we're backing up continuously, so we want to make sure that it's clear to anyone reading this document what that four weeks, what's happening within that timeframe.
So, just to make sure I'm clear, then, to put it in just general terms, you want them four weeks prior to the meeting?
Correct.
Okay? And then that first week, you're going to be looking at them and deciding whatever the staff decides. Then between week three and week two, that gives you the option to collect additional information, do whatever needs to be done, and then at week two, you will make the decision whether to send them forward to the HPC. Is that right?
Correct. Because if we don't get that notice out, then...
Right. Well, I understand. You got to do the notice, which I think is, what, 10 days or whatever it is?
End of 25, yeah.
End of 25, minimum, 10 days.
It's basically 14.
Yeah, okay, 14.
The way work days fall.
So, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So, it's four, you look at it for the first week, then massage for the next week between three and two, and then two, you make a split decision whether either you're going to forward it to this one or hold it to the next one.
Correct.
Okay.
And before that 14-day notice is due, this timeline will give you the opportunity to determine if there are incompletions in the application. Notify the applicant of those and give the applicant an opportunity to complete whatever it is they haven't completed. And then if they haven't given you what you asked for, what you're entitled to, you then don't put them down for the hearing that they're hoping to get on, right?
Correct.
Because that's, I think that's very important, and doing it the way you're proposing gives you the maximum leverage, because, you know, they want to get on that schedule. And if they, if they understand that the only way they get on that schedule is if they give you the materials that you want now, not the day before the hearing or at the hearing, they can supplement it, but you're entitled to require that they can, to submit a complete application. It could be supplemented later, but it's got to have everything that we would need in order to make a reason, not the ability, under this language, I think, to do that better than the current practices.
Now, that doesn't preclude them to walking in the day before and say, "I've got a modification, and here's my modification."
Why not?
Because you, because there's no, we shouldn't, one, you wouldn't know they're going to do it. We know the staff has everything two weeks prior to that they think is necessary.
Right.
But let's say the architect shows up two days before the hearing, and they make some decision and want to change a drawing or something.
So, then they miss the deadline. Yeah, you can make...
Well, no, no, because you've got, you've got the notice...
You have to go back to next month. Well, that's my point.
The problem is, if we have a deadline to submit an application for a change and still allow them to make changes at the last minute, even the day of...
What's the point of their first deadline? And two, it depends on what those changes are. If they coming in for you for a new, a new building, correct? That's what the hearing notice is going to be noticed for, right? Then they come in and say, "Well, no, you know, we're changing this from a new building to now we're just going to keep the existing building and just add on to it," for instance.
That's out.
You can't do that. So, there are certain limitations. If I want a new single family out on a vacant lot, and, you know, it's going to be brick, and you guys have been reviewing that, then they come in, "Well, you know, I want to do..."
Got a red brick, it's going to be white brick.
Yeah. Or, you know, the client now has decided that they want their kitchen expanded on this wall, and there's going to be windows added on this elevation.
Is there a way? I guess there is a way. So, let's say they do that, and by the judgment of the staff, that the changes they wish to make in the 11th hour are minor enough to let them proceed to make the changes. They come in, they make the presentation, now everybody's sitting here, reviewed something else, now it gets something new to consider. It's possible to deny them at that point because they've made such a big change. Is that right?
You can, you can only deny if it's based on one of your standards of review.
Well, then that gives us no time to review the change.
You can ask for more time. You can continue a hearing, you can, you have, you have options.
David, one question. When you say deny, do you mean that Alex could deny them the right to appear, or that we could deny the application?
I guess that...
They're two separate things.
If there is a change that I personally would consider so major, they don't have time to consider it, now what do I do? It happens that...
So, in a quasi, it's not, you're...
Well, you can, you can continue, you can continue the case.
Alexandra, go ahead. I think she's got some point.
And a majority of the, of the commission can continue a case, and I don't think, and if it's because the applicant didn't, the applicant made a major change, a significant change, too late for us to give reasoned consideration to, whether it's at the hearing or a day before the hearing, or it's a really big change, and it comes in a week before, where you don't have, they've decided they're going to build a cathedral instead of a house, you know? And oops, you know, so we can, we can certainly vote to continue the case to the next, to the next one. And I think certainly before the case is actually put down on the schedule for a particular hearing, Alex and the staff would have every right to say...
Yeah, until that two, at that two-week point, up until then is their decision.
That's right.
After the two-week point, I think it needs to come to us, because it's already scheduled, and the public believes there's a hearing on it.
Right.
And then we have to do something.
Right.
But our, as a whole, it's always, we can defer.
We can continue.
This is too big. Please make a complete packet with this in it, and we'll see you next month.
And if they don't agree with the, you know, the concurrence, then the answer is put it to a vote, and we vote, yea or nay.
And we...
And then they, if we vote no, then they get to go file a new one.
And...
Their choice.
And we would, we would have the right to make a reasoned decision to deny an application if, in our view, although, if in our view, the materials submitted to support the application are insufficient. And even, even if you look at it and you say intuitively, I think if they documented this right, we would have approved it, but they haven't documented it right. And so, we say, "You haven't satisfied us that you've carried your burden of proof," and so, we could deny it. That, that's to their disadvantage, so they would be better off, A, getting the application in on time, and B, if that's the problem, they could ask for a continuance.
But the decision whether we do it or not is ours.
In fact, Alex and the staff would also be within their rights, if that situation presents itself within that, say, that two-week time period, to advise the applicant that you're putting in a major changes at this, past the 11th hour, and if you do that, and you go ahead...
Then they can have the option to take...
The commission may very, may deny your application just because of what you've done, so you may be better off asking us to continue the case to the next hearing.
I think the only thing we need to watch out for is there's only one reason that we can deny an application, and that is, it doesn't mean, they have not presented on the record sufficient evidence to allow us to find that there's reason to approve a COA.
Right.
That's the only, the only thing. We can't say, "Well, you give us too much later," and we can't, we do it.
I guess I, then my question remains, if I had enough time, maybe what they present in the 11th hour is sufficient.
Yeah, but what they presented isn't.
I can't determine that, because it's, now it's sprung on me at the last minute.
No, no.
And please, so you, you mentioned that you don't have enough time to review, but in a quasi-judicial disposition is not entitled to time, you are, should be able to make a decision here or to ask for a continuation. And you can't expect the applicant to know that they can ask for it, because they don't understand the process generally. So, that's something the board should look at and say, "If I don't have enough information, I'm going to let the applicant know I'm not able to make a decision based on this." It shouldn't be based on time, it should be based on information, and therefore, you have the option to ask for continuation, or we have the option to continue your case.
And that could be a day, that could be a week, that could be a month. You've got 180 days.
But a question related to that, if I'm a neighbor of one of these properties, and I receive notification that my next-door neighbor's going to appear before HPC, am I entitled to see the information presented?
Absolutely.
So, therefore, someone who...
Yes, you are.
Someone who puts in a change two days or one day before, I may, I don't get separate notification that it's changed, though, because you've got notice to come to the hearing to be able to hear and be witness of any changes or any material submitted.
I don't know, but it just seems, it strikes me as unfair to the citizenry, particularly the neighbors, who are not informed of the change, or even an opportunity to know about the change unless they come to the meeting.
But that's the whole point of the notice.
That's okay.
The majority of the citizens aren't coming to the meeting unless they want...
That's, that's, that's the way law works. If I have a civil hearing, the notice is placed, and you have a responsibility as the citizenry to understand that. We don't have to go beyond insanity to notify the whole populace of Pinehurst of every hearing we're having.
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm suggesting that if there's a late, late change that is significant enough to cause a concern...
Right.
That they ought to be delayed to the following month.
And we can do that.
We empower staff to make that common sense approach.
Or we can end the hearing. Either way, there are two opportunities to slow that process down.
It's a different state of mind. It's at the 11th hour, who cares? That's enough, but I understand, for you, it's something that...
If it's something that you may need more time, then you may not be comfortable. It may be something that I can look at, and for me, I am comfortable. I can make that motion. You all can disagree and vote it down. So, I mean, that's why there's four, five, six of us.
You guys do it often? Do you push things to the next meeting? Just curious. What's the percentage of cases?
It's the exception rather than the rule, of course.
So, the burden was, will be on us here.
And it happens after the fact, after a COA. If it's minor, or whatever the case may be, how many times does someone start a house, they change? Sometimes if it's major, it comes in force, but other times, we fully trust staff to handle it, and start of our purview, and staff handle it, changes after the fact when someone changed their mind.
And we've seen a couple of properties appear multiple times to get the same project finalized.
Let's, let's remember one thing, the applicant bears the burden of proof.
Yep.
And so, although it is true that the only basis on which we can deny an application is on the merits, that is, that it either violates our standards, or it's incongruous with the special nature of the Pinehurst historic district, but we could also deny on the ground that you haven't shown us enough evidence to make that showing.
And that goes back, yes, to the evidence that's shown. If you don't believe, if you don't believe the evidence that's provided at the last minute, then it's not part of believable evidence, and you make the decision based on which you believe to be accurate, whatever the four categories of evidence were. So, yeah, you don't have to do it.
I think the example was the house that we approved last month, but not, continued the month before.
Right.
I thought it was clear reviewing the tape what the intention was, but that was not what the material presented said.
Right.
And all you asked for was, David, a drawing. Show me the drawing. If he could have produced it at the meeting, maybe it would have gotten approved, but it wasn't. When he came back the second time, it was very clear what he wanted to do, and...
And it wasn't what he presented in the first place.
Right.
Yeah, so we can, we can do, we, we don't have to approve anything as long as, again, we do have...
So, we're all in agreement?
We do have to listen to the case. We cannot turn flat, say, "No, didn't submit that piece of paper." That, you just can't use that as the reason for not doing it.
But Alex can. Alex can refuse...
Yeah, up to the notice, yes.
Can refuse to put it on the schedule until he's satisfied that a complete application has been submitted.
And he makes that decision at two weeks.
That's right.
Up until then, he can do whatever Alex has.
I'm guessing that Alex has to be arbitrary or anything like that.
Nope.
But he, but that is his, that is his right, up until that two-week deadline. Then, once he's put it on the schedule, then it's going to become our problem.
Right.
If it's still a problem.
That's the way it has, that's the way it develops.
I think Alex, I'm sure you know this, but we have five days, counting weekends, to do what you guys have four weeks to do, in brief. So, if, if there is a change that comes across your desk on the, at the 11th hour, and you think that we, we will not be able to understand it well enough in the meeting at the moment, then it would be reasonable, in my mind, for you to continue that to the next month.
Inside that two weeks, you can't do it.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have that ability.
But not only that, that's half of the reason why we're wanting to make some of these changes in the standards, is so you don't have such a heavy agenda, because it shouldn't be like that. We, we have that professional background and education to do these things, and we understand you only have so many days for review. So, why give you a 10-item agenda when the reality is, is we should be reviewing 10 items in a, or more in a week versus having those on the agenda? It should be more like two items on the agenda, as opposed to where if you look at our minor report, there's only two items on there. That's, they're reversed.
Been an inversion.
And then we wouldn't have a lot of these issues.
And now, if the applicant comes in and has a bunch of changes and says, "Well, I really wasn't ready," then we can grant him an adjournment. We don't have to push him through the procedure, we just, "Okay, you aren't ready," so there's no reason for us to even consider it.
By the way, as a practical matter, in terms of what we're being asked to consider, changes are not in here. There's nothing that says, "Oh, by the way, you can come in two days before, and if it gets by Alex or Alexandria, then you're okay." So, we're not required to approve a procedure that wouldn't permit that.
I, I understand the concern, David, because you guys do have a very important charge and a duty. You are the sole advisory board, aside from the Board of Adjustment, that actually makes a decision on a land development request, but I don't, I haven't seen it be, be an issue yet, so if, if something does come up, I think we can maybe bring it back up. But I, our intent is that we, we hope you, with some changes that we're trying to make with the application, as well as with the standards as a whole, that everything is going to result in a better outcome and a better product.
Actually, as I look at this, on the very last statement, village staff may only approve changes that are not considered major work. So, if I come in and I want to put a new window in or take a door, those would be considered major work on their own, and would be grounds for you to decide now. Is that a fair reading of what is presented here?
Oh, yeah, sorry, John, I didn't, I didn't... I'll shake my head, sorry.
I'm not saying that I'm correct, I'm asking the question, "Am I correct?"
Yeah, well, yeah, of course, if it's, if it's considered anything other than minor work, staff cannot provide any action, but then, at this point now, we're a, sort of a conduit between the application and the HPC. We're getting you guys and the applicant teed off to go forward with the evidentiary hearing, and then whatever outcome is...
I don't want to move on from this if other people still have issues, but I had a couple other questions related to the document.
Please, sure.
Am I correct that, that if I come to you with a, do, do minor works receive a COA?
Correct.
I would, I would, I would state my own opinion, because it was raised, I think, by Eric earlier. I would have no problem if you wanted to include the determination of basic versus minor versus major.
Got it, it's a note, thank you.
That would not trouble me at all.
And in fact, yeah, I agree, and maybe that should be put...
Earlier?
Yep.
Got it.
Where you have approval requirements, the first step should be to contact the planner for...
Right in the first...
Anytime you're undertaking work.
Right where you have the first indicated red line, it'd be right in there.
Well, back at A2, also, right, yeah.
And it, we are allowed to approve COAs for things which do not meet all of the must standards, if we find as a body that we can approve that. In the middle of the fourth paragraph, a non-red line sentence, you're trying to say, "HPC only considers applications meeting all requirements of the PDO." I read that as saying that we could not approve something that was not in keeping with the PDO.
Correct.
Would, would you, in essence, screen that out so that it would not come before us? You would tell the applicant, "Sorry, this does not meet the PDO."
Hence another benefit of moving that submission deadline out.
The answer is, yeah, he would, we shouldn't be seeing anything that isn't, by, at least by Alex's review, outside the PDO.
And if we did, theoretically, we can't approve it anyway.
I guess I would point out that the stage of development of drawings at that point won't disclose lots of things that will subsequently be affected by the requirements of the code. So, it's a good chance Alex won't know based on the development of drawings.
I think the PDO is separate from the building codes.
We're not talking about...
If it's blatantly in violation of the PDO, we shouldn't see it.
Right.
With what we've got to evaluate. That's not, we're not here to say that it meets the PDO requirements, because we, as you just pointed out, clearly, it might not farther downstream, but, in other words, if the building's built within two foot of the boundary of the property, we know the setbacks at least, what, five foot, 15 feet, whatever it is, and if it, if the drawings we're getting right now show that it doesn't meet setbacks, then we shouldn't see it.
One, one example for, for that recently that has happened is a new construction in the Linden Close subdivision, when initially submitted for review was over on the required impervious surface calculation. So, staff reviewed that, they flagged it, they let the applicant know. Obviously, there were some significant changes that they need to make to the, to the development, so they didn't come before you that month.
I think a, a point to remember is, we don't have jurisdiction to overrule the PDO, so that if, even if we approve something because we don't know that it violates the PDO, the information isn't there, or the information is there, but we don't look at it, because we're not, that's not what we do.
Impervious is not our problem.
It's, it's, it's approved by HPC, it still can't be built.
Right. Because they can't get the building from it, until they get the PDO.
Any other suggestions on what you're seeing?
I would just simplify it a little more. I mean, I think this could be cut to something further. I mean, because this is, these are people who have day jobs and are doing all a bunch of other things.
I was working with what I was given, too, so...
Yeah, I know, I know, but...
If you want to, Anna, I, I trust you, if you want to send something to me.
I will, I will. And that takes me to the flow chart, too, if I may, or not, no?
We, if we're, if we can move on from this...
Are we going to separately, are we approving this?
It's just kind of given a green light.
Authorizing Alex to make this a formal recommendation, or...
Well, if Ann's going to tweak it, and we're going to... Well, if Ann's going to tweak it, and we're going to look at it again, we need to look at a final copy before we approve something. So there's nothing here to approve. In reality, if we're going to make adjustments.
Well, if you think it's fogging down the process, I won't bother, but I just thought maybe it could be.
I don't think so. I mean, it's, honestly, whatever you send me, Ann, is going to probably take this group to look at and provide. And what I hope to do, you recall, we've looked at decks and patios, we've looked at pools and, I won't say the other.
Yeah, don't say it, don't say it, the three other words.
Fences. So ideally, we're going to bring a complete redline document for an actual motion by the board to forward a recommendation to council.
And, and I think that's important. I don't, don't want to lose forward motion on the process of deciding whether or which proposals can be handled at the staff level and not come to us. Because if, if we can find ways to, to do that, it's not just that we ease up on our own work burden, we facilitate things for our constituents, for the people who live in this community, if they are able to get approval of relatively minor projects without having to go through a hearing before the HPC, while at the same time protecting the historic environment of our, of our quaint New England village.
I think we want to move on to the application.
I will have one minor suggestion that I will send you also separately. As long as we're not making a decision here.
We're going to pull up a version on the screen as well to supplement the hard copy you guys have.
I guess while we have this, this little time here, a couple of things related to obtaining a certificate or determining where you fit in the bucket, buckets. We've seen in a few applications recently that people really don't know that they're subject to certain things. We've seen a couple, few applications come before us, and, you know, it's mea culpa, or, you know. So is, who's, like, I didn't know either when I bought a house, to tell you the truth. I mean, should an agent be telling, I mean, who is supposed to be the disseminator of this information and obligation to, to residents in the historic district? Should there be some letter that sent, you know, welcome to the historic district from the village, or, well, something? Because otherwise, how does one know?
We, we do have, like, a new citizen packet that we, that we send out. It does have a plethora of information, including, you know, you can drive your golf cart around the village.
Yeah, yeah.
Alls you got to do is go get permit.
But, you know, I know a lot of times we do get, you know, there's, there's some realtors that I think usually list more often than not in the historic district, or Old Town, as it's referred to, yes. And, you know, some call and say, I see it's listed as, what does this mean? So we, we do provide that information a lot. Or it's zoned, you know, R-whatever, what does that mean? Well, here you go. Sometimes when there's closings, or prior to closing, staff are requested to produce a zoning certification letter that kind of describes, oh, yeah, you're in the historic district, here's a map boundary, you're subject to the local historic, see this document here. Outside of that, that's about as much as we can truly do.
Could the welcome packet have, like, a little note card that says, you know, you as a?
You've arrived.
Yeah, well, yes and no. I mean, you know, as a resident of the historic district, please note that any construction you undertake, you should just call us and...
I, I feel like there's language in there for that.
Is there? Okay. I don't, I don't remember getting such a packet myself.
It would be a suspicion, it would be a suspicion of mine that the real estate community would be against that.
Yes.
That doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. That's their problem.
Well, yeah, they, they tout Old Town, but we, they don't say, when here's your obligation, you know?
And I think the other thing that would go to that, too, is that at the time you're buying a house, you're getting inundated with all kinds of paperwork. And I'll, I'll be completely honest, I'll tell you, I didn't sit there and read, read every last piece of paper I got, which probably would have been smarter on my part, but I'm trying to live a life, at the same time I'm moving and everything else, so it just kind of.
But you could say that about anything we get, but it's worth, maybe, I think, putting a card in.
Sounds like it almost is when they get a packet.
And then also, the signs, the hearing signs, it could be for God knows what. When you go by those things, you don't even know. In fact, there was a planning and zoning sign, hearing sign, up in the historic district for one of the homes at some point, because they were too close to the road, apparently. And so I, who knows what it's for and when it is? I just think, at least, list the commission or body it's coming before. Can that be done? Oh.
And it, it could be, but.
Because people do drive by, and they'll say, you know, some people will say to me, what is that coming up? I don't know.
The answer is, there's a telephone number, I can call.
Yeah.
That's the best you can do.
That's probably the best thing to do, is to let them know to call the offices, and they'll usually call, and they'll give us a location or describe the property. Some know the address, and we're able to give them all the factual information and all the public agenda information at that time.
Okay.
Let me ask the counterquestion. How often has it happened that somebody starts a project, and, wait a minute, you didn't get a COA, you got to go do that?
Yeah, right.
And where people are coming, gee, I already knocked the building down, can I get a permit for demolition?
Thanks for forgiveness, it's easier to get them permission.
The ones who come before, Ashim, other than the ones who come before.
How frequently in, in the last year or two have you had someone who started work and then found out that they hadn't met the requirements? Let's say innocently, they didn't know about them.
Right.
Or, I mean, you mean village-wide, or just in the historic district, or?
People who would be required to get a COA from this body.
Oh, gotcha.
Two, three times, maybe, that I can think of, and I'm.
Three years.
No, in the last month, we've seen that many. Last two months, we've seen.
One last month, I'm not sure about.
We had the...
Yeah.
That, we had the house that was already demolished, the insides.
So that's two, yeah.
That's just, it's, it's been a lot recently, but I'd say, as nosy as we are, there's village, village people living in a fishbowl.
Village people.
Everyone knows. They may ask for forgiveness, they know.
I mean, there's, there's only so much outreach we can do.
Well, I think the more information, the merrier. I mean, it doesn't hurt, but, guess I'm overruled, so we can move on.
I don't, I don't know if there was a recommendation. I mean, you want, maybe like a postcard every year, just a reminder, you live in the historic district.
There's a thought. Something, I just...
Hate yourself.
Because they're, they're not all picking up this book and saying, okay, my first, my first stop is the planner's office. I mean, right?
We're not responsible for thinking about fees that are charged. We shouldn't have to think about the expense of mailing out the postcard, either.
There's a pretty famous little planned community called Reston, just up the road. 60,000 people, a bit bigger. Everybody who closes there gets a packet from Reston, which includes the guidelines and all the requirements.
Oh, wow.
You got a sign that you got.
Interesting.
I don't know how hard that is, or if it's even legally possible, but it works in Reston.
That's a decision that the village council has to make.
And, and.
A, we don't have authority to.
Can't we make recommendations?
To make money, we can make all the recommendations we want, but it's up to the village council to.
I mean, keep, let's keep asking ourselves, because we're kind of getting way off topic here, too. Are we fixing a problem that exists, or do we think it exists? For closings and things like that, that, I mean, I, I can see that being helpful, absolutely. But that's happening at the county level. It's not happening in our jurisdiction necessarily, so it's, it'd be very difficult. And I'm speaking for, on behalf of myself and staff, I don't know that we have the capacity to be able to keep up with that.
Boss, that I don't.
A question, Alex.
I'll take it.
I'm looking through the standards, I don't see anything in there relative to contributing or non-contributing, as the checkmark has on the application. Who makes that determination?
We have a list that we look at, sorry.
What's the percentage of contributing versus non-contributing? What's the relationship?
I have no way to answer that.
It's all based on the his, history.
Based on year built, prior to 1948 or after, something like, that's about the right year.
There's an Excel sheet that.
There's a list that tells you whether it's, whether a building is contributing or non-contributing.
There is a list?
There's a list.
Where is that list?
Here, I can show you one.
I think it's in the back of the.
Here's one.
It, it wasn't a, an appendix in the standards document.
You don't have that, I got that from somebody.
But.
But that lists every house that.
Probably in the front of every one of the, the staff packs that they put in there when, right around.
I, I had one of those, one of those strange thoughts that said, do the non-contributing properties really contribute to the charm of the village?
It's, it's irrelevant to our consideration, from what I understand.
Right. No, but I'm asking the question, do they really contribute to the charm of the village? If the, if they were all non-contributing, we wouldn't have a historic district.
It means that in 1990, whatever, at that point, they said, these houses, boom, 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 are part of the national historic district, not our.
It's completely separate.
Yes, it's completely separate.
I think the answer to your question is probably no, but that's not part of our purview.
Well.
Right, it's confusing, I must say.
In my mind, it shouldn't be in there.
Well, it is, because there's another way. Well, one of the things that I thought we started doing here was to determine what's major work and what's minor work. I have a position that says, non-contributing could be considered minor work in all cases except for new construction.
Contributing.
The two separate issues. We've got the national, the national historic district, and then we've got the state historic district.
Pinehurst, yeah.
Pinehurst historic district. We have jurisdiction over this. The, the definitions of contributing and non-contributing come from over here, and it's something we can take into consideration, but not the way you're talking about. So if it's non-contributing over here, that has really nothing to do with us, other than maybe a judgment call, okay, it's not contributing, so we can not look at it the same way we would if it were contributing. But not enough to, to do that, because we don't define contributing and non-contributing in our, in our historic. There's nothing in our standards that define that.
But we make the note, we make the notation in our application.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
We do.
It shouldn't be in there.
But maybe it shouldn't be in there, then.
Right. It may be useless data, yeah.
If, if your point is valid, I don't know if it is or not, but.
That's what I've always been told, Alex.
It's irrelevant to our, to, at least to my decision. I couldn't, I don't care whether it is or isn't contributing, what is the information presented about the change they're going to do?
Well, I go back to the point of the charm issue, you know.
But those houses.
I think, I think one of the things that we decided at the beginning of this process was to move as much work as we possibly could into the minor care decree and leave it to staff. That's what I thought our, one of our charges was. And one of my suggestions is to look at the possibility of non-contributing going to staff.
The, the, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with that, it may very well be a good idea. I think it is important to remember that the contributing, non-contributing decision made by a different agency, that we have no connection to, no power over, so forth. It's a federal government agency, it doesn't cover the entirety of our historic district, it's somebody else's opinion. We've had discussions in the past, as I recall, about dropping that information from our reports. I've been in favor of leaving it there, because it's information that may, may be useful, but it's certainly not dispositive.
And the other problem is that that has, that information is never updated. We may issue a COA, and they may rebuild that piece of property that was labeled non-contributing into something now, if they came back through and looked at it again, they would say would be contributing. So it's, it's never updated. It is what it was when they made their survey, period.
And that's the way it'll be forever, right?
So, that's not why, that's what I'm saying. It may get changed.
Building may get changed.
Building may get changed, and it may not be a valid.
But the designation was based, I believe, on year of construction, and so if I build something brand new now, I tear down something that was not contributing, and I build a house that's identical to a Tufts house, it's still non-contributing.
Right. And I'll, I'll make a comment, and then if we could move on. I know we, we don't have too terribly much time, and Alexandra spent a lot of time with this document, I'd like to be able to get some, some feedback. Terry, we, we hear you. The other thing is, without actually doing some, another type of real, true architectural survey on those structures, you may find something that is listed as a non-contributing structure that might really be contributing to the charge of this commission, which is the special character of the historic district. So it, it is, is a little bit, there's a little bit more layers to that onion than what it may seem.
Alex, I, I see in what's before us, a revised 8, 221, that says 12. Are these different documents?
Well, it's good to have John around.
I was about to dance.
Yeah. All right, thank you. There's, this one has all the corrected spelling errors, most all, anyway. All right, so this is a packet of information. It's more of a packet. It's something that would be initiated upon the first point of contact with an applicant who has interest, and/or somebody who calls in, because I do get a lot of calls of, I'm looking to purchase a home, it's at this address, I just want to know, what does this mean? So this would be a good opportunity to also email them this packet, to let them know that any, any changes that they make to the exterior, they would need to utilize this packet as a tool. So keep in mind, this is a tool. With that, a lot of this information was pulled specifically from the standards, and the template itself is something I've utilized in other municipalities that have actually been incredibly effective and very efficient. So in tailoring it to Pinehurst, I utilized a lot of what's in there now, and put it in a format that was user-friendly and easily readable by any citizen in the community to follow the process, and to kind of have a better understanding of what they're going to be facing when it comes to major, minor changes to the exterior of their home, and how they need to go about getting that approval. So this has some of those changes in there, you know, looking at a four-week review period and deadline, but also calls out information on how to obtain a certificate of appropriateness. So up here, you're going to look at general information. What is it? How do I get it? Why would I need it? Here are the list of reasons as to why you would need to have a major COA. So moving into the second page, this is more of your public hearing process. So now you know what you need and why you need it, how are you going to proceed? So this gives you the general information about a quasi-judicial public hearing, which is fairly important, because a lot of applicants, they don't understand the difference between just a general public hearing, between staff review, a design review committee, and a board such as yourself. With that being said, this gives just a simple list of what it is and how it functions. And then a description of the HPC decision. So this is kind of just a quick touch on when you all make that vote, is it congres or is it incongres? So that's just for them to understand that when you all are doing your deliberation, the words you're using are then translated to the applicant, so they know what they want to listen for. And then legally, I put in the appeal process, just at the bottom, there is that information in our standards, as well as on the website and through state statute. I just thought it would be something easy to reference here, in case an applicant needs it. Once you get down to the historic, or the deadline and meetings, I think this is incredibly important. The, a question that I get a lot, and a lot of phone calls and emails about, is when's the deadline? Because we don't have anything anywhere that shows a deadline or the meeting dates, and I think it's incredibly appropriate for applicants in the community to know, when is my paperwork due, and when is my hearing? And if I'm planning ahead of time for construction, I need to be able to look at a schedule and know, based on that schedule, how I, that's going to affect my plans, especially when working with contractors.
This document should be read as prior to these changes. This document should be read as prior to these changes.
Correct.
There will obviously be some consistencies of minor work, major work, hopefully changes. There would be some.
These are three-week deadlines, not four weeks that we're proposing.
Correct.
And these are four-week.
Three weeks. No, these are all three. It's 21 days, January 6th to January 27th.
Let me look at March.
Okay.
March is three to 31.
Well, the reason for that is, you can't have somebody come in on January 1st. So it's the first Thursday. These are all listed as first Thursday and last Thursday. First Thursday is the deadline date, last Thursday is the meeting date. It gives a sense of consistency, as opposed to looking at a calendar and counting back so many days, so many weeks. So that's kind of what this is.
Which is a nitpick. That's not true in October and November.
I can't hear two people at one time.
Sorry.
Go ahead, John.
Just as a nitpick, that's not true for October and November, because the November, December meetings are earlier.
Right, because of holiday schedule, which is mentioned down here.
I guess begs the question, which is it, we're saying three weeks?
Well, this can't even be implemented until those are decisions that are made. So this is a fill-in-the-blank, not a nitpick of the dates. This is literally changing every year and updated. Thus, if you all were to choose to go with a model like this, all of these dates would have to be changed to the current schedule, because the new schedule that you're looking at for the revisions isn't even implemented.
That's what I wanted to understand.
Yeah, there'll be a bit of refinement that we'll have to do. Hopefully, we're hopeful.
I actually even went as far as putting the deadline time on that day as noon. That way, we can work with applicants to get those few hours, because there's always, it's inevitable there's an applicant who will call us 8:00 AM the next morning and say, can I still submit it? There was a computer issue. So it gives a buffer for staff and for applicants.
I would. The noon idea is a great idea.
Yeah, nothing in here.
Ben, yes. Mm-hmm. Oh, yep. Yep. All right.
I hadn't seen that one, but thank you.
Alexandria, the idea is that this would be handed as a packet to people who say, hey, what do I do?
Yeah, so this is, and it's actually, it's a complete packet, and would be given just as one full document. And there's even a fillable version via PDF. So everything can be done electronically and simplistic for applicants who want to physically see it, but also online, who just want to be able to fill it out and attach it.
We can, we'll be able to put this as a blast, especially if we get to a point where council adopts some revisions that we hopefully can afford recommendation to. We've, we're adjusting our online permit center, as well as some helpful fields for when folks are applying online. We can incorporate some in this language, too. So we hope this is going to translate.
It's a good idea.
Understanding these documents appear in different places, I would ask you to think about the fact that you have, one document says how to obtain a COA, which is going to appear in one place, and you've got another one says how to obtain a COA with completely different language. I like what you've done here. I'm not criticizing the work. I'm wondering whether maybe, and this is to Anne's point of simplification, at some point, maybe this should just say, refer to this document, so that they both say the same thing. This one is much more detailed, detailed in some ways. I think it's worth thinking about. I'm going to think, I'll defer to you all to decide whether you want to do that or not.
And the only other question I have.
Also, if you look at the meeting schedule that you published, that was in the packet, it's different from what you're on the screen.
That doesn't surprise me.
No, because what we've got here is a couple of fifth Thursdays on this screen, when the fourth would be the regular scheduled meeting.
Yep, so the original implementation that I've utilized for a packet like this with meetings for boards similar to yours are in that, and these are, Alex and I have battered around all kinds of different schedules for deadlines and/or meeting, hearing dates. But what I've utilized in the past is the first Friday of the month, I'm sorry, Thursday, actually. It's the first Thursday is the deadline, or the first of the month, whichever. There's a lot of language there, but then the meeting was always held on the last Thursday of the month. So some months, reviewers got an extra week. Some months, you didn't get that because of holiday. So that's why you're going to see these meeting dates not aligning. And again, these are, more or less, it's text filler, because we can't even implement this if we wanted to, since the current standards state otherwise. And ultimately.
Those dates would be a whole lot of tweaking between now and publishing.
Yeah, but I want to just apply it in there, because if I just put a bunch of Xs on there, your imaginations will go wild. So anyhow, ultimately, the intent would be to align a lot of this verbiage to be very similar to that that is in the standards. And the reason we pull it out is because I think when you tell somebody where the PDF of the standards are online, they get fairly overwhelmed. But calling out a paragraph or two of something that's really specific helps the everyday applicant to be able to know how the process works and how to get through that process. And again, once verbiage is finalized for the changes, your redline changes, all of that would then be transposed into this document for those few minor areas that would need that correction. Anything else before I move forward so far?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of quick thoughts. First of all, on your appeals process, that becomes, I think you'd be better appeals process, see page so-and-so and do it much more detailed, because what people run into is, if you don't file for both the Superior Court and the Board of Adjustment, then you end up missing one or the other. So it just, and it's not really, I don't think, our position to, we have to notify, and they have the right to appeals, not necessarily put in there what those, how to effectuate those rights.
Right.
Because it gets, there may be legal reasons to do something different than what's here, so that's.
We are not offering legal advice. That's not our, we are not offering legal advice here, so.
Right, right. That's what I should say. Nor do you want to invite one, but they, we do have the responsibility to say, you have the right to appeal, put it into the end of that statement, and let it go from there. And the other thing, my quick question is, where does this reside, when and if we do get to it?
So.
What document does it reside in?
Sure, let me go to your first question or comment. So when you are, when you say appeal process, so instead of the paragraph that I have, you want me to just simply state, reference such and such section for appeal information? Or do you want me to indicate at the end of this paragraph that further appeal process information can be referenced at such and such section? So add to it or delete it?
Judge and me say, would say, delete it, because it's not legal advice, and it's not our position to be providing that. The right, they have a right to appeal, but it's their responsibility to go figure out what that right is and how to effectuate it. And I don't want this agency, the HPC, and I'm talking about staff at the moment, I don't want HPC be giving that kind of advice until and unless we get advice of North Carolina Legal Counsel.
Not only that, but then they go ahead and change some of that stuff.
Also note that this isn't, this isn't, I don't know that this is advice. I don't think, there's no advising or instruction. There's simply notification that there is an appeal process, and that it can be referenced, and that they have that right. But I can definitely pull whatever reference it is in our standards, and put that, and hope that people can figure it out.
I think less is probably more here.
I don't know that I agree with that, but I will respect that and pull it. So to answer your next question, as far as where the packet would reside, that is something that would, I think internally, staff, we need to have further conversations on that. But ultimately, you're going to want to have this on hand in our system, so we can hand it out, whether it's at the desk or online.
Not arguing that point at all. My concern is, where does it reside, so that we can ensure that it gets updated, and we give the most recent thing out? So I guess it's more of administrative.
So that would be a staff administrative process that we would have to review annually and submit.
It would not be part of the standards.
Would not want this to be in the standards. Yeah, this is simply an information packet to help people.
It's supplemental. And presumably, this will be on the Village of Pinehurst website.
Yeah, absolutely.
But could I recommend that possibly? I mean, you have a flow chart in the standards, right?
Yeah, and that's also in the standards. This matches.
Well, can't we say that at the back of the standards is a packet that will be something?
We don't want to do that, only because there is a lot of specific information here. For example, those meeting dates, that checklist, all that could change and be a fluent change, and it's easier if it's not on the standards.
Well, I mean, you can put blanks for that, but just to show that this is part of, this is part of our procedure, though, right? Because there.
It's helpful information, and it's.
We've got FAQs in here. We've got flow charts.
And I could argue why some of that needs to be in the regulatory document, but it's much easier, and it will be much more impactful if it's something that we're able to distribute more often. If you give this versus, go see Appendix X of the standards, you're going to get more with this. It gives us greater flexibility.
I'm arguing you take a lot of this stuff out. I mean, this doesn't add to the standards. The FAQs don't necessarily add to the standards. That belongs in a packet for people who are actually seeking.
There's a balance, I understand, to be struck between the two.
I love it. I love it. I'm just saying, why don't we take out these pages and say, see Appendix D for the applicant packet, or application packet?
I think having, so this is where the psychology of it kind of plays in. Having a completely separate packet allows the applicant to feel as if they don't need to read the entire standards, even though most of this is duplicated. But having it as part of the standards, as you mentioned, it almost just says, oh, well, here, I've pulled the section of the standards, you read it and take care of it. And that is almost a deterrent, going back to, you want something that's appealing that's not in here?
No, you're not understanding, I think, what I'm saying. I'm saying it's a standalone, but it's an appendix in these, just so.
But I'm saying, keep them separate.
People who are the nerds reading into the weeds will see this, and people who actually need to do something will have it, too.
And if I understood an earlier comment, if they go in the, if they go in the, if they go in the standards, then it has to go through a formal process to be changed, whereas if it's a separate packet, it does not. It would be changed by staff.
So I would suggest that we revisit this issue, once we've completed this process. It may very well be, I'm inclined to think it will be, but I don't want to prejudge, may very well be that some of these things that Anne has been pointing out, which are duplicative of this separate package of materials we're now developing, can be taken out of the standards. Right now, they're useful, but if there's another, better document that we can refer people to, maybe that we leave them out. Let's come back when we've completed the process of this, I'll call it handout, so we know exactly what's there, and then we'll make a decision.
And once Anne gives me some condensed language for the other, that way we could maybe marry the two, or however we need.
This is a great idea. Don't, whatever we're talking, it's a phenomenal idea to do. I didn't mean to start a whole discussion around it, but I just wanted to know how it was going to get updated was the bigger part of my question. Usually, that means you got to put it in something that you track. So that's, that's all I was trying to say.
But quite frankly, it should not be updated without the council approving it anyway, right? Because it goes to the substance of the standards.
Depends.
The standards need to be updated, and this needs to track the standards.
So.
Or official document.
I would.
Not yet, but that's what we're talking about.
It's no different than our other applications. Our fence applications don't have any other review than with planning staff.
Okay, that's fine. I just asked.
Or rezonia. And it's fine. It's, I mean, we gave this to you, so without much prior education on it.
It's very helpful.
It's a great document. I love it.
That would be me.
Effect or emphasize their eyes glaze over in the first place.
Send a copy.
Yeah, and there's a lot of changes that would potentially need to be made as far as, you know, website link locations and stuff like that. And we, it would almost be a micromanagement to have to bring that back to you every time a link had changed, and we need to change that document. I just think that having a user-friendly document that staff can use as a tool for applicants to navigate the process is the entire intent. And so, and it kind of comes down to, yes, this process flow chart is something you all have seen before. It's what we reviewed prior. And this is just something to help the applicant see it outside of a big document, and just visually understand where they would need to go in the process if they don't meet the beginning criteria. They're trying to figure out, hey, can I have this done at staff level? But that's, this is just, it's a revised flow chart to, again, help them know what the steps are for each particular process, knowing whether is a COA required, can a staff level do it, or is this a board process? So that's the simplistic measure there of the flow chart, which can, it doesn't need to be critiqued at the moment. That is part of the overall standard. So whatever is approved in the standards would then be implemented here. So just know that. So this is the application checklist. This is something that we worked with all of staff in our department to collaborate in an effort to be able to initiate other reviews as part of the historic, so that way we can verify, does it meet all the PDF standards, and that's something you don't have to worry about. Or if it doesn't meet the PDF standards, for example, impervious surface, and that changes the entire site plan, we can then work with the applicant ahead of time, pulling it from the agenda to allow them to fix the overall site plan. But by having this application checklist now, we're able to do all that much faster in a much more time-convenient situation.
Just a small question. The application checklist is so comprehensive, at a point in the process, when a lot of this stuff is unknown, it, to me, it looks like an application checklist for a permit, as opposed to historic preservation, much earlier state of development.
This is probably less extensive than what you proposed, because these are very basic things. You need a north arrow. You need a scale. You need your name on it. Include the address. But starting on this page, this is the overall checklist. You do need to have an application. You do need to have a site plan. I need any proposed plans and documentation that goes with it, including the existing features, the material and color list, supplemental documentation, for example, the red caucated woodpecker paperwork that might be needed, if it is needed, the owner acknowledgement, if it's not the owner who's applying, and a survey, and then, of course, you need to make sure that you cover the fee. So then going into the part of the checklist and application itself, this is an effort and a conversation that came up from making sure that they don't leave something out. There's been a lot of plans I've reviewed where, on the application, it indicates that they're changing the shutters in the chimney, but I look in there, and now I see fences and walls in the site plan. So this gives the applicant an opportunity to go through a list of, am I changing any of these? Now, again, in the application itself, they do have to indicate what's the existing material, proposed material, color, et cetera. But this is kind of like a double reference to where we can align the two and make sure we're not missing something, and the application, applicant can also check themselves, as far as what all work are they doing.
I don't think they need to complete every checkbox every time. This is just a list of things to look at and consider.
This is what would be proposed to the project.
It's also been flagged in both cases as indicative.
Yeah, so the next page.
Mandatory or required, or.
Yeah, so this would be just, which of these apply to your project that you're submitting today?
Right.
You know, are you doing any work to any of the following areas? Please check next to it. When you get down to the checklist itself, a set of plans.
Hold on, now I'm confused. So page one says application checklist. Page three says application checklist, but you're.
Well, this is all a checklist. These are all checklists.
You said this is the checklist itself, so I'm confused.
Yes, so this is the, this is what you were in reference to. So this is the checklist itself. The before is not what you were talking about. You were ahead of me by three pages. So I'm caught up to where you are. On this part, this is actually a breakdown of each document, really, that would be submitted, and what should be included on that page. Most professionals who do this do this with no thought, because it's a standard. And it's actually something that they already have set up in most of their programs to already layer on. However, this also helps the applicant, and when they're going through here, and mind you, it also says that not every one of these are going to apply to every project. This list is a comprehensive list for any potential project that I could imagine that could ever come in here for the rest of the time. I mean, this is, you got to think not just on one thing.
And a lot of this information you've gotten from our development ordinance that will pertain to other applications.
Right. And so if they're going to, if they're going to be producing these documents in the permitting phase, it's not going to go much out of their way to have to go ahead and get it for you all, too, which is what you've asked for. So it's.
All I beg to differ.
Okay.
It's conceivable that a lot of this stuff, they don't need to know at the stage they're ready to submit to us.
So like what?
Meets and bounds. I don't believe any of us in this room has ever looked at meets and bounds.
So they don't need to have their property lines on there?
Yes, they do. They don't need meets and bounds.
Well, that's usually listed on the survey, and we do need that.
You don't need even a survey to come in here.
We need a survey at a staff level to start that review, so that we're not holding up the applicant eight weeks when it comes to that time.
We see hand sketches. We see aerial photos with an outline of a fence. All of that gets it, gets them through this stage without having to employ a surveyor who will tell you what the meets and bounds are.
Well, surveys are only required when they're creating a foundational change. They're adding that footprint, they're going to need a survey.
The checklist here says meets and bounds. So my point is, there's a lot here that suggests to an applicant that they need all of this stuff in order to apply. My question is, do they?
If you read the instructions, though, it clearly states that not everything is going to be applicable. Please be sure that all applicable documents and supportive information are included. So if your project doesn't have something that's applicable, then that's not a box you're going to need to check.
If I were a citizen, an ordinary citizen who wants to add a window to a poolhouse and saw this phrase, meets and bounds, I'd have no clue.
Then don't check it. Then don't check it.
Let, yeah, and let me step in here really quickly. There's, again, there's some level of, this is more of stuff that's not going to necessarily be forwarded, not all of it, to the commission as part of an exhibit or request.
Okay.
So there's some terminology that staff is always using with the design professionals in applications. There are certain levels of work that require a sketch plan and not a site plan, like a fence application, et cetera. So we were, we threw this at you without giving you a lot of our day-to-day knowledge that we have within our department, so it's not as rigid or as, for every single type of request that you think, or even that's on the agenda today, that you would have all this information.
Would we even see this?
No.
Yeah, see, this is just a working document for them. We never get this.
Okay, I get it. I thought this was up for us to consider to include in some way, but it's...
And a lot of this, staff is going to be using when they submit their application and review with them and say, hey, you know, our, our data is indicating that zoning is this and not that, and typically that's on like the application form or the online application, which we need to, another topic of conversation, that'll fix. Wetlands, watershed, if it's not really applicable to the request, like for density requirements, then you're not necessarily going to be something the HPC is going to be considering anyway, but it's helping us when we're doing a full comprehensive review that's going to help them even after their pass going before the HPC.
It makes the rest of that process so much smoother for the applicant.
I agree.
And just making, and having all the information up front that they're going to potentially need, and a lot of this will come through, and how I've utilized the checklist in the past is when I sit down with an applicant in a pre-development meeting, I actually go through and highlight in the checklist, you specifically are going to need these items.
Just answered my question. If that's, if that's what you do...
That is what I do.
And I'm, I'm sure you do. If that's what you do, this could be an extremely valuable tool to, but, you know, the major projects that have serious architects and builders involved who are professional and familiar with this area and so forth and so on, they don't need all this help, but the new, the new homeowner who doesn't know quite what is involved can sit down with you and you can explain, if this is what you want to do, this is what you're going to have to have, so get your architect working on these things, and that will make life easier for the citizen and for us.
Now that I'm hearing this, if this is primarily a staff resource, is this something we have to approve at all?
Yeah.
I think it's more informative in nature.
We're trying to help, we're trying to help the process get a better outcome.
Yeah, okay.
One thing that seems to be lacking, though, that is very pertinent to us, is you say, we say the burden is on the applicant to produce. Yeah, there's another of that detail or structure in this village, in the historic district, we don't have anywhere that they are responsible, right, for showing that it is congruous. Isn't that burden? Yeah, isn't that burden on, yeah? Because I know you guys have been scrambling many times to find something, and I thought that burden was on the applicant.
Well, that comes back to a larger question, which I do not propose we address today at all, which is the fact that I can find one or two pictures somewhere in the historic district does not, in my mind, make it congruous.
Right, right.
Or make it not congruous.
Or not, correct.
But the burden is still on them in the first instance to produce something.
And the decision is on ours to determine whether we actually think it is congruous or it isn't, despite the evidence presented.
It shouldn't be your burden.
We, we consult with them, I would say. We're not, other than a staff report, a map, we're, it's not, not appropriate for us to go out and, let me go hunt and find that proposal in its existence or prevalence or not.
Yeah, and the fact, and the fact of the matter is, whether you find it or whether you don't doesn't answer the question, because congruity is not a kind of fact-bound issue, which is what you, as planners, spend your lives on. This is, this is a loosey-goosey thing that a bunch of people who aren't planners, some
of whom, some of whom are not able to plan what they're going to do tomorrow, have to decide based on some gut feel.
Are you saying it's in the eye of the beholder?
I know it when I see it.
See all the beholder?
Yes, I, I, I think I, I think I know it when I see it. It's like...
And I'm not going to speak for the professionals, but sometimes when you go from one jurisdiction to another, there's different rules that apply. So something like this for even a professional would be handy to have to just say, oops, where I usually work don't require it, maybe I want to know that. So I think it's more informational and for use of staff, and if I'm not mistaken, you're showing it to us just so we would know what kind of documents we're using, that you're using.
And it's been, you know, I think one of the things, too, that you all have had and brought to our attention is that you want us to be able to accept applications that are complete, but to have a parameter to help us to help them. But ultimately, and the reason this document was tailored to the HPC process is to allow us to have a checklist that we can share with them. It's a checklist that we utilize for review and a checklist they can utilize for completeness. And even if something doesn't apply, for example, let's say we don't need to have the topography information, which most of the time, unless it's a new development, you probably won't, but they would check on here what they did include and what they aren't, which shows us, I'm sorry, us as staff, that they've utilized this, they've read through it, and they feel confident in what they're submitting is a complete communication and will help them to prove and provide that burden of proof for us. And at the bottom of this, I do ask that they sign, and this is only an acknowledgement of submittal, that they feel that they've included necessary documents to help support their case, and this just allows staff to see that they have read it, they've acknowledged what they're submitting, again, is how they feel. And we then go through and can utilize this checklist as a cross-reference in reviewing their application, and it goes beyond HPC for efficiency to help the department. And that is, that's the last page, and then what would be attached to the back of this is the actual application that has been approved and is utilized.
And those apply to both major and minor work, no matter which they're applying for?
It is. It's easier to have just one.
If it's minor work, we're never going to see it anyway.
Right, so again, goes right back to staff, and, and this really encourages that beginning conversation when they call in and say, hey, I want to remove some trees to expand my driveway. Well, let me email you our packet, and then I highlight the things that I know specific to what they're inquiring, but to have all of these things then also helps them to go, hey, do I want to go ahead and change out my front door while I'm at it? And if so, then what?
If you put all of it in, well, you get all of it for 500 bucks. If you do it one at a time, each one's going to cost you 500 bucks.
Exactly.
Not that money's our business.
The application form itself does not request square footage for new homes, right? I don't think. I have not seen that on there.
Good question. It would, it would be helpful, Ann.
It really would be, because I'm scouring the, the designs that are submitted for that usually, so that can be included.
If, if you want that, then you, then we need to specify what square footage we want.
Right, under, well...
Under roof, heated, you know, whatever.
I would imagine for you, it's a scale question as well.
Yes, and it is in our scale, is it?
That's not a, that tells them like putting the screws on.
No, that's okay. It doesn't bother me if you were.
Yeah, like 56 square foot.
Yeah.
We should also include the area of the shutters.
Not putting the screw in.
I would change, recommend we change our standards, say, all shutters have to be capable of being closed, not look like they can be closed, but really closed. In fact, we want to see them closed.
So if, it sounds like then the concept, HPC is very pleased with the work Alexandra's done for this, and we can, we can massage it as we need and we'll move forward.
Your document.
Hopefully in a couple months, we'll have it implemented, and you'll be able to see maybe a better result.
Wait, so the next step is we're going to see a final, is that it or not? Or you're talking, you're talking about this packet?
That's Doss, this is Doss packet.
I think, I think there might be some opportunities. Eric, with your permission, maybe, you know, we can work with a commission member or two to kind of work out maybe some of the more HPC-related edits, and again, as, as we revise those sections of the standards, we'll make sure there's some consistencies where there's overlap that doesn't need to be, or redundancies, you know. I'll, I'll welcome some help.
But this does not need to be a recommendation to village council. This is internal between staff and HPC.
Correct.
Because they aren't going to vote on this, these two documents that we covered.
It's a tool. It's not part of the regulatory documents.
But a very, a very valuable tool, and you made a tremendous amount of progress.
Yes, that was impressive in my book.
All right, so that, that covers that, and then, so I know we have our regularly scheduled meeting here in about, what, 30 minutes? We can...
I got, at least I would think another good 15 minutes we can work.
I wouldn't say either that. I mean, if there's something that we want to go ahead and, and start to look at and review, we also need to go ahead and schedule another time and allow us a break to get everything transitioned over.
Got some more work to do on the issue of major-miner work, and we've made a lot of progress on that, but I take it there's still some more steps that we want to go through.
The next topics, I would like to have some language and some consideration of the group is, as it relates to windows and doors, changes on exterior elevations, as well as material changes, how that relates to classifications of minor work or major work, and then how the applicable standards would also need to play into that. So that's, that's the next topic I would like to, if we can, if honestly, if we can get through that and then have a more agreed-upon, basic major-miner work, I think we're ready to plug something into the overall document, and I think that it might not be as comprehensive as we probably could tackle on, but by goodness, that's going to make life, I think, easier and better for all of us.
Alex, would that include things like classifying as minor work? My roof's worn out, it's 20 years old, or 20-year shingles. I want to change it just the color, but an approved type of shingle, approved style or material, all I'm changing is from red to black, whatever. To me, I don't think that requires the consideration of the seven of us. I can't imagine us, if it's within the color palette, saying no.
I, I think we kind of already in one of the meetings, it may have been one of the first ones that you may not have been there, we agreed to basically changes to, to the roof if it meets the guidelines, or some, sorry, standards, bad, old habit.
That's okay.
And those are that, you know, it's one of this material, like say, if you're going to change it from a different material, but say it, it's metal, or, you know, you're going to have part of it's metal, well, if it meets the standard, and it's a clear objective standard, obviously, then it doesn't have to be forwarded to the HPC. But again, you'll be able to see that again when we bring it in the full document.
Talking about that, the one thing I would ask that we do, and I, none of this was to that point, is when we get down to the final copy that we're going to approve, like if we're doing a red line kind of portions of it, if you can get that to us a few days ahead of time so that we can review it, I think that would save us a bunch of time when we got to reviewing it. I mean, this is fine, because this is a work issue, and we never, there was never really intent to approve this document tonight, but when we get to the final version, whenever that is and whatever that is, if we could get that in advance, it would sure help.
I would, I would like somewhere around a week timeframe minimum to get for you guys, so don't be concerned with that.
A red line version and a clean copy as well.
Yeah, clean, red line, however.
Would it be possible, I sent out an email a few days ago about a couple other procedural issues. Can we cover those in our next work session?
Could be able to. One, one, the tech side's on our, you know, produce, we're working on that as best we can.
And item three, list, for example, only musts making consideration shows less likely. There's a, an attachment in my email that discussed that. And then the last one was findings of fact, what parts need to even be in there. Send an email. Hopefully, everybody here got one.
So we don't know what kind of caseload we're going to have in the next couple of months, I assume, yet. Any, any intuitions as to whether we'll have a, an easy month coming up in the next couple?
Yeah, I feel like if I say anything, it might jinx it, so I'm just going to go with, at the moment, I have only one application submitted for January that isn't even fully submitted at this point.
I would make a guess, just based on whether the January tends to be a seasonally low month, whether one is the number or some other, unlikely to be 12.
Because people aren't working them up now, which they would need to be able to do to get into January, because they're going to Christmas parties and doing whatever people do at this time of year. Do we want to do the same thing we did today, then? Add a couple hours to the beginning of the meeting?
How do people feel about that, as opposed to putting it at the end?
I think it's better, we can plan on it now, and if we end up with more than we think, no one wants to sit here starting at 6:00 for a work session.
Right, okay.
Well, for, and for special meetings, our notice requirements of meetings is 48 hours, so we've got ample time. You know, we, we could, we could decide that we need to meet on the 5th of January, and by the end of the year, if we notice it, we're still fine. So for special meetings, you know, we, we have that latitude.
I, I agree with, with John, and to me, it works well to do it just in front of the same day. I block two extra hours off earlier, and then if it does with others...
Say we could make an informal decision for that, and staff can decide if they only need 48 hours. If they need, if we see a whole slew of things come in on December 29th, please no.
But yes, I, and I, I think that makes sense, and I'm, I'm really anxious to move this to the point where we can submit to the, to the village council, what I think is going to be a great improvement for...
When is the January meeting? 27th?
27th?
Yep.
It'd be Thursday, the 27th.
1/27/22.
The 4th Thursday.
2:00?
Anybody have a conflict with that?
We got a room?
Emily Hall's open.
That's always a good question. January...
And then the topics to discuss, in addition to what David had mentioned, Alex had mentioned windows and doors and material changes, as well as the continuation of the major to minor. Is there anything else we want to add to that? I think that's, I think that's a fairly good list. I just wanted to...
You got two hours, and that...